A change of order of the items on the agenda tonight. And I would say I'd like to welcome five members of the public and that's the reason for that change in order. What I would like to do is to bring forward the item on... It's item 13, traffic calming on West Road in Borston Road. Bring that forward to item number eight, which is straight after the deputation of the public. Therefore, if members of the public want to give a deputation on that, that's available to them. And then if you wish to leave, then you're able to do that at the time. But please, if you wish to stay, please do. But it gives you the option of going if you wish to. Is that okay? Okay, apologies. Apologies from councillor Lucas. And all those in favour? Unanimous, was that? Adam, sorry, can you say it? Adam Stampson.
All those in favour?
Unanimous. Okay, are there any disposable pecuniary interests that we may have on tonight's agenda? Please raise them now. If there are any other interests that you have on the agenda, you should also raise them at this time. I presume, because nobody's saying anything. There's nothing in the book? No, there is none. Okay, you are also reminded to inform the clerk if there are any changes which affect the rest of members' interests. Okay, first item three is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of June. I propose to accept those minutes first.
I propose it.
You can't. You're...
I forgot that.
Okay, Vincent proposes. Second? Okay, but all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, and against it, none, two abstentions. Six and two abstentions, I think. Now, the minutes for tonight's meeting, the clerk... Oh, sorry, I've got a son who's got something. Okay, minutes for the extra meeting we held on the 29th of June. You recall that that meeting was adjourned and then incorrectly reconvened? Well, it wasn't reconvened because of the incorrect procedure. The clerk has asked for advice on how that should be worded. And that has yet to arrive. So what I'm proposing is that those minutes will be approved at the next meeting of the council, together with the minutes of this meeting. Are there... Oh, I've got three councillors' questions, sorry. Three councillors' questions from councillor Brooks. First one was, "One of my last questions at full council was not fully answered. Can the council now answer, 'Who authorised the second part of the Wilking-Chapman solicitors expenditure, which was not correctly authorised in accordance with the council's financial regulations?'" And my answer is, "Wilkins-Chapman were contacted in late 2014 to advise on the production of a disorderly conduct policy. To account a meeting disruption the council was experiencing at the time. Wilking-Chapman quoted a fixed fee of £500 to provide a draft policy, which was authorised by the clerk. The chairman was dissatisfied with the advice provided and wanted the policy amended to be more generic. This was amended by Wilking-Chapman, agreed by the chairman, and the policy approved by council on the 15th of April 2015. An invoice for £929.50 was then received from Wilking-Chapman on the 16th of April. This was queried as the expected bill was for a £500 fixed fee. The query resulted in the invoice being reduced to £829. There is no continuing liability for further expenditure resulting from this work." And the second question, "Looking at the timeline of events surrounding the Wilking-Chapman expenditure, why did the individuals who were responsible for this unlawful expenditure not seek approval from full council, which would have made the expenditure legal?" And my answer is, "At the time, authorisation was not sought as the council was not aware of any additional expenditure before the 16th of April. The expenditure was reported to council on the 13th of May in the schedule of payments, when Wilking-Chapman are being asked to confirm the reason for the additional expenditure." And question three, "The chairman of this council has for some period of time conducted himself in an unlawful manner, ignoring the council's governance related to financing contracts. He and members unlawfully excluded me from taking part in the meeting on Monday, the 29th of June 2015. He then conducted council business which has been deemed void. How much longer is the council going to accept this level of conduct from our chair?" And my answer is, "I am unable to answer this question as you are asking me for the views and opinions of other councillors. The chairman was voted in for a period of one year, with effect from the 13th of May 2015." Those are my questions.
I know it's not normally appropriate to comment, but can I make it minute that when I first asked the question about Wilking-Chapman, in this chamber, I was told that that expense, as a member of the public, was related to employment issues, nothing to do with disorderly conduct. That is why questions were asked in your absence about it, and it refers to a time period. So why am I being told, and members being told, something totally different this evening? It just doesn't make sense to me. It's either employment issues, or it's to do with the unlawful misconduct policy that the council's adopted. You know, you've got to get it right.
Well, obviously, it's not usual to have this discussion.
No, but I think that's an important issue to...
Can I meet you outside the meeting and discuss and tell you all about this?
I would like it to be an answer in public, because we've been given wrong information. And I think you should be able to tell why we were given that information incorrectly. That's all I'll say, because I don't want you voting to kick me out.
I presume you're saying that I told you that?
Sorry, I can't remember off the top of my head this evening who told me, but the formal... Actually, you did. I can go and get the video. You said it was employment matters. So there's dishonesty there, chairman.
I don't want to get into detail of discussion in the meeting, which...
No, but I would like to point out to members that there's dishonesty in answers at this council, and that's all I will say.
I cannot recall saying that to you. That's all I'm saying. I can't recall saying that to you.
You did, unfortunately. I'll get the video for you.
Okay, I will discuss it with you afterwards. Okay, but not at this present time.
Well, the whole theme's been on the basis that it was employment advice.
Sorry, I've got to move on.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me the time to point that out.
Chairman and members' reports. I have a report as chairman, in fact as mayor. On the 31st of May, I attended the Rutland Show. 20th of June, I attended an event at Viva Castle, which was organised by the Duchess of Rutland in aid of the Army Benevolent Fund. On the 22nd of June, I attended the Flying Flag for the Armed Forces Day, which was, the flag was raised at Oakham Library. On the 25th of June, I attended the annual reception at Area Wittering. And then on the 30th of June, I attended a presentation evening at Rutland County College and presented the council's award for outstanding achievement to one of the people's there, George O'Clough. Fourth of July, I attended the second medical engagement event at St George's Barracks. And then yesterday, in fact, the 7th of July, I met the In Bloom judges who were inspecting the town and welcomed them to the town. Yesterday evening, I attended the High Straits event on the Rutland Bell in aid of Warning Zone. At the present time, we've had three band concerts in Cuts Close. And during those concerts, I walked around and introduced myself to those attending. And I received certain comments, which I think I'd like to pass back to the council. Many comments like, "Nice to meet the mayor. I didn't know we had a mayor." All I meant, thought the band concerts were excellent. Most, in fact, I don't think anybody thought that Cuts Close was not beautifully maintained. Many people who I spoke to were attending and were on holiday in Rutland. Some people travelled regularly from Stamford Mount Leicester to the concerts, which is very nice to know, and obviously, if we can continue to attract them, then that would be very good. I had one gentleman last Sunday, who was on holiday, he was a member of the Newmarket Band. And was so impressed and commented that he wished Newmarket Town Council were as forward-looking as Oakham Town Council. Now, that's unusual to hear that. It's nice to hear. All comments were very positive, I must admit. As part of my job as mayor, I always think it's part of the job is to promote the town and the council, which I hope I do on that instance. Thank you. Any... Oh, I've got some.
Oh, yeah, a couple of brief ones. That's all right. Thank you. Some of the councillors will know that recently, a member of the public visited the chamber in the evening. They approached myself and asked if they could come along and do a look at the chamber and see what the council had up to, so they could do a report, which doesn't sound overly exciting. But this was a five-year-old girl, who's at the primary school in Oakham. And what it is, is that I got a letter, it dropped through my letterbox. No surprise, because it's actually my granddaughter. And basically, I'll have to read it, because I'm sure most of the councils won't be able to. Being essence, she's saying, "Thank you to Oakham Town Council for letting me look round your chambers and teaching me a little about what Oakham Town Council do for us. Big thank you from all at the school for the pencils and postcards," as it said. So it's actually addressed to the chairman. So there you go, if you can read that. I'm going to prize. So that's, yeah, not bad actually, because Nicole, who's only five, and she's written that all herself. The lines, if they look a bit wonky, that's because I drew the wonky lines. And the other thing is, is that on the outside bodies, Michael, Joyce and myself from the Castle Restoration Project, this folder has been alluded to before, which is kept in the office. And what it is, at the moment, the project is going into the phase now where they're going to be doing work on the trees, on the embankments. The embankments, which are partly owned by ourselves. Robert Clayton for the council has offered to come in and give a briefing to the town councillors on what the work is going to entail, if they want it. I've actually written back to Robert and said, "It's contained in the report, which is a 20-page document, and I'm sure that if anybody's got any real issues or concerns, because we have all pretty much signed up to this work, that they will raise it." Joyce is aware of it, she knows the work's got to be done, she's happy with it. So what I would suggest, if any of the councillors want to be, know what's going off in detail, or if they get asked by members of the public, the folder is in there and you can access it at any point. I would even say to members of the public, "If you're interested to know what's going off, I'm sure that if you contact the clerk during normal office hours, he will allow people to come in here and look through this folder in the confines of the chamber, because it's not top secret, it's not MI5 stuff." So rather than get Robert in to do a briefing, I've said that people all have a look at it, and if they've got any concerns, they'll go back. But the work's going ahead, basically. And that was it, chairman. Thank you.
A point of, whatever, before we get to that item. I believe that we are supposed to vote on moving an item on the agenda.
Yeah, well, when we get to it, we will.
I was just that you made a proposal that it would be moved. Normally, we've done it at the beginning.
Okay, your report. Martin Paul.
Thank you, chairman. Just a few items on there, just to update you. Christmas lights tender, so adverts will be going in the Brooklyn Times and Mercury tomorrow and Friday. As per decision made at last meeting, planning parks committee. You've got the cost of those there, £341.60 for two adverts, he's a quarter-page advert going in. I cleared the advert with Adam, so that's what's happening. Notices are going to go up on the notice boards, again, advertising the tender on the website, and the company suggested by Martin will also be in touch with those about that by the end of the week. Classic car sprint, just to update you a little bit on this. You might be aware of this proposed event that was due to take place at the end of August on Oakham High Street, being organised by Oakham Town Partnership. Now, we have been copying into various emails today. So basically, our local council council are not going to authorise road closures for that event. So if anybody does want a copy of those emails, then just let me know. If you haven't already seen them, we've got them in there. There's some there also from Inspector Cordina, the ex-inspector of Oakham, regarding that item. Right, skate park, it's nearly there, and it's due to be inspected by a representative from Calou. Calou, the people commission to build it. That is at 8.30 tomorrow morning, it cuts close, so if anybody would like to come along. I believe there are some concerns about it, and I will certainly be there. And it would be nice if members are awake and around, if they want to come down and go over it with the representative from Calou. Now, what I would just say for new members who might not be aware of the process by which it was built. Now, the design for the skate park, this was actually approved in January, on January the 14th. Now, this was following considerable work at the time by former town councillor Alan Walters, which also included a consultation with young people in the park. So that was the design, and there is... People are often asked, "Why isn't it bigger?" And the answer is quite simply, the English Heritage, or Heritage England, as they are now called, have been asked about it on a number of occasions, and they have always said they would not allow a larger facility under the site. Okay, so that is the footprint, and the town council's always had to work within the confines of that footprint. Next one, finance working group minutes. So we've got copies of those, as with the promotions working group. We're keeping a file of those. And in fact, I think what we've agreed is I should be emailing all of those out all day. Michael's on it. Once we've done them, we'll email them out. But we keep a file of them in there as well, again, if members want to see what the promotion... Sorry, the finance working group is discussing. Planning Parks, that's the 22nd of July. Please, if you do have anything you want on that agenda, we would need that really by before next Tuesday, the 14th. So if you've got any burning issues that you'd like to see on that agenda, then please, we have them. And a report as well, as I asked for, I think the clerk's brought last time. And finally, just to sort of let you know that monthly film showings are going to be brought back by Arts for Rutland, starting on Thursday, the 3rd of September 2015. While I haven't put those, the tickets will be £5, available from those outlets. And further details from Arts for Rutland will be published by then soon.
Thank you, the public. Understand that there's one person wants to make a deputation now, is that right?
Yes. Just wish to update everybody on the Brompton Road issue, with it being discussed tonight. Councillors Burdon, Clifton have met with Dave Brown, who's the director of Places at RCC. He's brought up all the accidents in that area, and it is now, he has recognised it as an accidental accident. And as such, they are now going to, in this financial year, they are going to do a design pricing and public consultation with everybody, with the hope of in the next financial year implementing it. But what he's proposing at the moment is putting his ever crossing in somewhere there, which will include extending yellow lines to be on the Braunstone Passway junction road and directly opposite that junction as well. They've not got approval for the induction of the speed limit, because the police won't support that, because they say it's unenforceable. We've met with the residents, and we've said that we will eventually chase that up. This is a separate issue, but the important thing at the moment is the fact that Dave Brown has accepted its problem, and he's going to go through with something. But obviously, if we can have your support on this as well, it would be very important.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who wants to make a deputation, without covering the same sort of ground, obviously? Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you. Okay, now on to the next item. This is the one for moving item 13, or bringing it forward. Can I have a proposal to bring item 13 forward to the next item first? Ashley Smith, seconded. Councillor Moore. All in favour? Okay, before you should have the letter from Hopkins. Are there any comments? Anyone who wants to raise any points?
I don't want to be fast, I don't know who we're going with.
Sorry, I didn't see it.
No, I just waited. And I support what the residents are asking for, apart from the curious point of removing a grass verge for parking. And I couldn't support that, because I believe once you open the road up with off-street parking, you then create more speed, nice flow. We see that. I was approached by a resident this morning about Burley Road, where there are parking restrictions all down. And they said, "What can the town council do about traffic calming for Burley Road?" So if you take the cars away, I see that as increasing the problem. And also, I'm a bit green and don't see that grass verges should be used for cars. So apart from that, I would support.
I was just sort of parking on the water area. I mean, I'd totally support anything which encourages safety. And having been up and down the road a few times, you can see how vehicles ride from the top of, from the road and they're coming to Oakham from Braunstone, pretty much speed down the hill. So in actual fact, it was only a matter of time before there was going to be an incident. And of course, it's exacerbated by the fact that the COG was actually a lot busier than what people probably thought it was going to be. So to me, it's a pretty good initiative. The members of the public that have got behind it or got involved with it have shown, done it in right spirit. And I think the town council should support them 100% in whatever needs to be achieved to make it safe.
Can I have a proposal done? Yeah, the two things we've got is, they've implemented 20 mile-an-hour speed limits along this stretch of road, as is in place on Colgate-Oaken Road. And also direct radar speed display signs. These signs have been shown to be very effective in reducing the speed. So all we want is to implement... Doesn't stop us. So the first one is to implement, we'll take it together, chairman. Implement a 20 mile-an-hour speed limit along this stretch of road, as is in place on Colgate-Oaken Road. And also direct radar speed display signs. There is this point which councillor Brooks has just raised there about removing the grass verge. Now, shall we take that separately, if there's some controversy about removing the grass verge? So first of all, is anyone prepared to propose that we recommend to Rutland County Council implementation of 20 mile-an-hour speed limit along this stretch of road? And also direct radar speed display signs?
I'll recommend it, but I agree with what the comment was made, that it's unenforceable. I have it in the area I live, and nobody drives at 20 miles an hour.
Does that stop us recommending it?
No, no, I'm just saying that I recommend it.
You recommend it. Any suggestions? All those in favour? Now, another point there, about the removal of the grass verge on West Road to enable a safe parking residence, without it interfering the safety of this stretch of road. Removal of the grass verge on West Road. Can I have a proposal for that?
Can I just speak on that? Please do, please. May I propose that we actually do a feasibility study? Or see if we can have a feasibility study of the cost incurred to mow the grass? A cost incurred to actually put off-road parking, which I personally feel would be benefit to the area, for the driver? And see if we can actually come up with a good case to put forward to the county council? That would be my proposal.
Have a second for that proposal then? All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? Two against. Okay, so that's carried. But on that basis then, we're not putting a proposal forward to the Rutland County Council to undertake that work. What we're doing is a feasibility study prior to doing it.
Yes, that's what you're saying. So that if we've got evidence to support it, then we can take that forward and take action.
We could recommend that for the future day, if we've got the time to do it.
A couple of things. I'm going to do the feasibility study. Second thing is, usually by taking vehicles off the road to do off-road parking, the police will state that to take cars off the road, it actually speeds the road up. That's one of the reasons they liked having all the people parking down Stamford Road. It actually slowed vehicles down coming into the town, and it does work. In actual fact, if anything, turn Braunstone Road into a car park, that will solve all the issues. So I'm a bit concerned as to how the actual feasibility study is going to be done.
Thank you, chairman. We have voted on it.
Yeah, no, that's...
I'll tell you later, you can go on.
No mention of the parking restrictions, the yellow lines.
I was... Sorry, I wasn't being rude. I just forgot, because we were planning these. One of the issues with, which came up, which Mr Howard won't mind me mentioning, is the highway code. It seems that things are not being enforced, like people shouldn't be parking near the junction. And if you are going to go for these things, maybe we could recommend that the council actually does a bit more enforcement. It surprised me with the comment as well about the speed, that no one can enforce it. It doesn't really send out a good thing from police and council, that you can't enforce the speed limit. And they don't appear to be enforcing parking at junctions.
Do you have a proposal to make on that?
If it's a comment, we're adding to whatever we're sending that we note that the council doesn't enforce, or whoever's supposed to enforce the restriction. Am I right? The restriction is 100 yards, isn't it?
It's 32 feet from any junction. So it's Highway Code Section 283, I believe.
That's brilliant.
So it's 32 feet or...
But maybe Richard will check that, to double-check that thing. But it would look good if we put it like that.
Now, suggest that goes in the feasibility study. For the background.
There's nothing in your letter about the double lines?
No.
That's why we didn't consider it.
It has been mentioned, and the thing is, what we were told from RCC that we had to put recommendations in ourselves, which you can imagine just a few members of the public sat there going, "Oh", and the yellow lines was one of them. But now it's come back that the councillor, Burdon Clifton, has met with Dave Brown. He's actually going, "Well, this is what I want to do", which is something we must have put forward anyway, which is putting the crossing there, which he assures us is going to include yellow lines covering the junction area. But no, I'm just looking. I can't see the other lines.
That's why we don't...
Can I make a suggestion, as we're using the rule that allows more participation? If we can, through you, ask the chairman if there's any points, as this is the only opportunity the residents have got, if there's anything they've missed that we could include?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to go there. But it's the double yellow lines, which, are you saying then that, can't the council already agree that we're doing it?
Well, most of it will be part of the calming measures that come with the crossing. But councillor Burdon suggests that we may be able to, with enough pressure, get the yellow lines before that, but with people, as a separate thing.
Excuse me, sir.
Just quickly, as well as double yellow lines, to stop people parking there, do what they've done in Church Street. Double yellow lines, and then on the pavement, they put red, not red, yellow lines on. That means that nobody can park there.
No blooming anything?
No. So it's supposed to be double yellow lines, it's the yellow line on the pavement as well.
Please, you want to take others? Did you want to take others? We've already voted on it. Come and invite them. And that's a separate issue. I'm just waiting, sorry. In view of what the police said about the... About the county council proposing crossing and yellow lines, can we not get more details about what they're proposing? Because we're always going to end up with about three different ideas going around here. Want to take the verge away, want not to take the verge away, you know, want for speed cameras and all the rest of it. So if you need some feedback, you can.
Yes, if we're putting a crossing there, it will do the same thing because you can't park, makes us a crossing on both sides. So it will eliminate the yellow lines on you.
The class has reminded me that on anything like this, then Rutland County Council will consult with us prior to...
Yeah.
So there'll be a second attempt at that. And then if necessary, at that time, we can make those...
Yeah, we can just clarify that. Or a member, not older in the physical sense, might recall that we were asked by our CCO about a zebra crossing on Huntsman's Drive for access to Campus College. So if, as a member of the public states, that that is something the Rutland County Council are thinking about, then I would expect them to come to us and say, "What do you think? Do you think this is a good idea? That's what has happened in the past." So obviously no reason why that can happen again in the future.
Rather than rely on the fact that it's happened in the past and let's hope it happens in the future, I would propose at this point that we also, with our other bit that we've said already, I propose that we ask Rutland County Council to specifically consult with us in regard to what their plans are with yellow lines or crossings. So we don't wait for them to come to us, we specifically ask that we get involved. That would be my proposal. It resolves all those issues, also enables that two-way conversation that Paul is going to do.
Always in favour of that proposal? Okay. Is that okay? That satisfy it? Sorry about that, we went away with the double yellow line aspect, which is not in your letter. Anyway, thank you very much. If you wish to stay, please do. But obviously if you finish now, then I'll just... Thanks for the comment. Okay, and now we come on to the item on co-option. As members are aware, we did interview four people for, we co-opted on the town council, but we have four vacant positions, sorry, three vacant positions. We now have to vote on our view of which candidates should fill those posts. We have, say, three posts and four candidates. In this instance then, we have to vote and obviously the candidate who is successful will need to have an absolute majority. Now, an absolute majority is that that person will have more votes than the remaining candidates have between them. So is that clear? Anybody? Yes.
Can I propose that we have a written sign vote?
Yes, you can do it. Do I have anybody else who wishes to?
That's not a proposal, it just needs three people to support a signed vote.
Absolutely. Okay. It will be a signed vote then. But what happens then, that we will vote for Oakham South West first, as did the single seat. And then obviously the person who is successful in Oakham South West will then go out of the equation, will not be considered for Oakham North East, obviously. Therefore, Oakham North East, there's two seats of which there'll be three people competing. And we go through the same process again for each seat. Long-winded, I know, but it's the way we have to do it. Are there any questions at all about the way we're voting tonight? Okay, and we're being a signed vote. Right. So first one is for Oakham South West. The clerk is bringing around the papers. You need to indicate against the name of the person you're voting for and to sign the paper. If you don't sign the paper, then it is void. All right. Yes. Once you've voted, you're going to be counted. We will then go into the options of... And you have to sign it, don't you? You must sign it, else the...
One candidate only, please sign.
You're voting for one candidate only.
People can ask to see them as well.
Right.
People can ask to see them.
Oh, yes, although they're signed, they can be... Ready for your screen, pass your votes round.
They want to fold it.
Got it, Paulie? Okay, just to join the meeting for a few minutes while...
To suspend it.
Suspend it, Simon.
Just in case. Suspended.
On the brain. Excuse me. While we chat about this.
People got to... Same, you would have to go. Not after sitting so long.
Funny enough, this is one of the scenarios we asked Nalk about, National Association of Local Councils, because the situation is there are eight members here, so the successful candidate would need five votes to constitute an absolute majority. Jasmine Hopkins has four, Rebecca Hearn has two, and Michael Haley has two. Okay? So the situation that we have here is nobody has an absolute majority.
Brackenridge has no.
Sorry, and John Brackenridge has no votes. Now, what we have here is the situation where the person with no votes is eliminated, which is Mr Brackenridge. And I'm going to ask you to vote again. You are now voting for three candidates. Okay? I'm sorry this is long-winded, but this is how it happens.
We're going to do it properly. Okay. Well, no, it's not. It's a new one.
Can I clarify? Richard said we're voting for three. You voted for one.
You have a choice of three candidates. Now, Mr Brackenridge has been eliminated, but you are only voting for one.
You're voting for one and Mr Brackenridge is now dropped out. So you've got three people to choose from.
But he didn't get a vote anyway. No, that's the problem.
Yeah, but he's...
He might get a vote in the next round.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just because he's out of this one, he's still worth considering for the other two. So if it's the same thing again, well...
This is why co-option is not a good idea. But it's the first time the council's done it properly in my history.
What are we getting there?
We're getting it, it's good. We've just got to...
We're now about slips, so...
Oh dear. We've warmed up a photocopy, yeah?
Get closer. Don't forget to sign your forms, please.
What if it's the same again?
Come to that in a minute, come turn in a minute.
Hoping someone's going to change their mind.
Excuse me. Need some more paper?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Oh, we've got this. You may get a seat.
One can have four now.
Oh, one can have four.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know, Richard has got it written down.
So there are, second round then, ladies and gentlemen, we have five votes for Jasmine Hopkins, three votes for Rebecca Hearn, so Jasmine Hopkins is duly co-opted to Oakham South West.
Now, you have the option now of signing your forms and joining the meeting, if you'd like to do that. And you also have the option of voting.
That makes it a bit different, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, so if you'd like to then... Suspend the meeting.
Suspend the meeting, why? Jasmine, can Miss Hopkins sign her forms? Sorry, it's very long-winded this time. We have concluded an end of my work. My boss came today and...
We have concluded.
This is what we said, we were going to do this amazing work.
We've gone through all of our processes. That's why we're here. We're going to go through them again. Also going to start voting for the restrictions, ten grid, two-eleven buildings.
As we've already discussed, your point about West Road, you know, has become of interest now, so. So we go on to the next vote.
It was just suspended.
No, suspended it.
Meeting resumed, good work. We now go to the, vote now for one of the members on Oakham North East, and we have to vote individually for both of these. So we have to vote for the first one and the second one. The two members for North East. So we're going through the same process again, but don't forget that Miss Hopkins is no longer a candidate because she's already been... So you've now got three candidates for each post. Chris, can I just, please, no talking. Shall I take his mic? So this time you're voting one person again, but do not consider Miss Hopkins, because she's already in the council. Don't forget to sign the vote. Anymore. Meeting suspended.
Right, it's easy.
Can I go now then?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr Stubbs, for your assistance. My pleasure.
It'll be interesting now if we can get the full picture of what the council want to do in Braunstone as well. Because it's sort of a bit difficult because we've got the newspaper, which is fine. I'd say that if they tend to have such an issue, we need to get the whole thing looked at all too.
Right, thank you everybody. So from the last time, seven votes for Rebecca Hearn, one for John Brackenridge, and one for Michael Haley. So Rebecca is duly co-opted to Oakham North East.
Thank you.
Would you like to sign your forms now, John? Meeting suspended.
It's been recorded.
David, would you like, would the clerk sign your forms?
I did say you're going to wait to talk.
Sorry?
Meeting's now resumed. Congratulations, well done, David. I hope you enjoyed your time with Oakham Town Council.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, now we have one more vote to make, and that's for the other seat in Oakham North East. Don't forget now that you will not be voting for councillor Hopkins or councillor Hearn. So you've got two people to vote for, of which you have one vote. So, you've got two people to vote for, of which you have one vote. Don't forget to sign the voting paper. Meeting suspended.
So, now there's ten of you, somebody needs six.
Six, oh, that could...
Just ten now.
Oh, and I have sang.
No, that's right. No, 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 no. We've got to sing for the next one, then, so we only need one. May I be excluded? Thank you.
Have you been bullied?
Meeting suspended again. On duty for the next forty-eight hours.
I hope you don't get called out. Well, I think it could be the very perfection in that. Not John, what was his name?
Michael Haley.
Michael Haley. I put my money on Michael Haley, because he was good, but I support Charles, who was a young person in the community, but I would say that Michael Haley's probably might teach us something. If it comes out, then you know, it's one for John. He's a big bloke, hasn't he, now, so I've got a vote for him.
Eight votes for Michael Haley, one for John Brackenridge, and one abstention, so Michael Haley.
Is Julie co-opted onto the council, as he's not here tonight, obviously he'll be notified tomorrow, I'll notify him tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much for that, I know it's a rather complex system, but it's what we have to do. And we now move on to item nine, which is the fitness centre.
Thank you, Ken. Right, hopefully, I've tried to keep the orange paper as simple as I can. When this was prepared previously, the quote for converting or doing work at the fitness centre came to, or the estimate, the first estimate was fifty-eight thousand pounds, and the suggestion was that, from one of the previous meetings, that maybe we should do it in part, if we do anything. So, we had a revised quote, which is detailed on here, it's broken into three areas, I think, gives you a cost breakdown, and this would be to make the building what I would describe as fit for purpose. If I step away from the town council relocating there, the town council unfortunately do need to do something with this building if it was to be used as even a community public, even if they didn't occupy it themselves. So, to make it fit for that purpose, this is where this indicative quote has come through at twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five pounds. So, it's still going to cost money to put the things in, like gas central heating, which is one of the main costs, which is about twelve thousand pounds, heating, which is like boilers and radiators, joinery and plastering, which is doors and stuff. So, I've tried to keep it simple. So, it's down to the members to decide on what they want to do, and that is that, one is that the council puts this out a formal tender, because obviously the value involved, and agrees the process by which this is going to happen. Second option there is that the council sets a date that the formal tenders are in by, the waterworks and completion dates. And then, three, the council might want to set a provisional date that they choose to relocate, because as it says in the first paragraph, in January two thousand and fifteen, the council did agree in principle to relocate, subject to costings. When it comes to where the money will come from, I've got a meeting with the chairman and county council on other matters, and I was going to raise the question, because on the previous report, it was suggested that if it's used as a community centre, we won't be able to get hold of some kind of grant from Rutland County Council, so that is an avenue. In essence, so the council needs to be mindful that it might have to fund this itself, and that could be either out of its reserves, or by building it into financial planning for the next year, or for another loan, which I don't have to care. That's it really, so the paper's there, I'd rather hear what yourselves have to say, because we've spoken enough.
Does anybody have any comments, questions? I realise that the two new councils will be a little short on knowledge on this, but...
Yeah, I did go up to the open surgery and something slightly a little round.
Shall I just add something after there? Because in fact, we did, we did put in the paper that we'd have an open surgery stroke consultation, it's not a full-blown thing, I mean, it was open on that Saturday morning between ten AM and two PM. These are accurate figures, they're not falsified, they're using any way, I only counted one head, one person, sort of thing, even though the children were in it several times. There were seven adults visited the site, that wasn't including councillors, there were three councillors there throughout the course of the day, on and off, there were a total of fourteen children, that's different faces that came in, either to use the facilities or to take advantage of the fact that we had put on some squashing biscuits. Some of the suggestions, bribery, if you like, so one of the councillors said that I was bribing them, but if we weren't opening the building, they wouldn't be able to get in. Some of the suggestions that came from the public, just to put people in the picture, is that members of the public said it would be brilliant, because when we come up here to with our grandchildren, and we're sat watching them play, when we need to use the toilet, we have to go home. So, the fact that there could be a potential access to another public toilet in the area. One of the ladies said that a mother and toddler's opportunity, the children, the young people, which are aged between about eight and sixteen, were advocating a youth club style approach. Somebody said that it could be ideal for bingo for the elderly, because they're not aware of anywhere else in the town that does it. And a young girl, who was around about fifteen-year-old age group, she did come in, said it would be a good place to practise music, and I don't think I put her up to that, wasn't me, but she said it would be good, because she could practise music and play there. And one of the comments, the only negative comment I had from public was that all the kitchen would need improving. Next.
You're itching to say something.
itch away.
Right, yes. I, in his medical attention. I was there on Saturday, and I've had various thoughts about it. I would like the council to go out to tender, and proper tender, and I'd like to see that tender before it goes out. So often, we're told people are seeing it, but as councillors, we should all see it and approve it. Also, there's still a little confusion, because I was told that this council did decide to move there, but what was said again this evening suggested otherwise again, so can we clarify that point? Because I believe if we are going to move there, we need to know we're definitely going to move there, otherwise it's no point, no point in us doing it. And also, I think it's very helpful knowing what contractors can be like, not all of them, that we actually set a date this evening, if that was one hundred percent that we're going to move, and then people know as a contractor, this could take a month to do the work, but so we set our date telling them that we're going to move perhaps November, just picked that off the top of my head, so then you know you tend the process, you've got a month for the work, and they have to be finished. So, I won't go on.
In the January meeting, it does actually say that the council will relocate there, subject to financial reports and blah blah. So, it actually does say we would relocate, subject to this sort of stuff.
But it doesn't say when.
Doesn't say when, just says we will. Okay, so the council made that decision to move.
Could we get maybe a re- clarification on that, so that it is set in stone? Because I actually watched a video of the twenty-fourth of March this year, where the mayor actually sat there and told everyone the council hadn't made the decision to move, so I'd like it to be somehow said that that is definite, otherwise a lot of people are going to do work, and then somebody's going to turn around and say, well, we never actually agreed it.
Well, he's looking at the minute. I mean, and as far as I'm aware, the minute the decision was made, he'll look up the minute and confirm it with you. Anybody else any input?
A decision to do something subject to something doesn't sound to me like an incontrovertible decision. Does it? A decision to do something subject to something doesn't sound like an incontrovertible decision.
It could be challenged.
Well, I mean, the point is, what if the costs come in, which were not acceptable for the council, to the council?
That would be, sorry, no, I only mean that there are many instances where that sort of, that sort of unfinished thing, it's just worked around, because people, it's in people's interest to do it, so it's entirely undesirable to have a decision that isn't quite a decision.
Yeah, and Michael was right, and I think what it is, is that the study was based on, well, the two reports, the report that Mike alludes to, where there was a question mark over whether we were going to move or not by a previous chairman. The first meeting, as I said, produced a value of fifty-eight thousand pounds, which the council felt at that time was a lot of money to pay out for moving. To look at it as a phased move, for about this value, an indicative cost of twenty-eight thousand pounds, it's now whether the council feels that that is an appropriate amount of money, whether it can afford, well, it can afford it, and the decision can be based on the fact that they're looking at about twenty-eight thousand pounds.
That's the original.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Sorry, to what standard then is this? Because is it really twenty-seven thousand pounds? There's no electrical points here. There's, you mentioned the kitchen.
The works that have been done on the fitness centre, prior to the fitness centre people moving in it, which was about three, four years ago, there was seventy thousand pounds spent on the building, where there was an upgrade to the electrical box and electrical points. And that was made fit for purpose to be a gymnasium, and the bulk of the cost of hair is based on heating. What the building is lacking is heating. And to be used as either a creche, or a youth club, or a council chamber, to make it fit for purpose for that, by an office-style environment, it would need central heating, and that's why the cost of electrical heating.
Does it not need any further electrical work?
No. No, the, when the guy that did this quote, which is Brown's of Melton Mowbray, they surveyed